Calling to an order, Clayton City Council meeting for Tuesday, November 19, 2019. Let the record reflect that all council members are present. If everyone will please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undegowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item is the consent calendar. I do have one correction to item 3A, but are there any other comments?
No approval.
Okay, so let me—
Second.
Okay, and let me make the correction first, the 3A.
The details.
So on the minutes on the reports, just a minor thing, but on item 5D, I didn't announce the meetings, I actually attended them, so if you could please just note that it was in attendance. But with that correction, I assume the motion—
Yep.
—with that correction. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that carries unanimously. We do not have any recognitions or presentations tonight, but we do have a number of reports. I think we have a report first from Planning Commission, from Commissioner Altual. Please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers.
I think the mic is not on there either.
No, it's not on.
It's on, okay.
It's not on, but some—
Is that good?
I think it's not on.
It's not turned on. Slide it up toward you.
Okay.
Is it on? Okay, yes.
There it comes.
On Tuesday, November 12, the Planning Commission met to address a public hearing for an environmental review, density bonus, site plan review permit, and tree remover permit for an applicant by the name of Mr. William Jordan, it's called Olivia. Just to mention in quick, there were four planners present because we, a week before, a planner resigned. The meeting went for four and a half hours, and we had 17 speakers at the, public speaking at the meeting. And the Planning Commission did not take any resolution at that time, and they tabled the issues until December 10th, where we will continue. Just to let you know about general notes of the meeting, most from the comments of the public, and the planners themselves. Major comments were why a story polls or post were not posted on the location, similar to the Chair's project. People were asking about it, why. By the way, there were some questions that been asked to the city, and the city would come back with answers on the next meeting. And also questions for the city attorney, who will be present in the next meeting, to my understanding. The other question was Marsh Creek Road being a scenic road, is this segment of the road is a scenic road? So they wanted to understand that. That's questions either from the public or from the planners. Outside monitoring for affordable housing. There was lots of questions regarding parking from both public and planning commissioners. Number of affordable units, and future sales of the units was a big argument, and the tax revenue for the city. The mechanism for parking in adjacent neighborhoods. And not to mention that the original application was done in 2017. And the meeting ended at 11:25, but I just want to mention that the public comments, it was 17 people with one email, and it was two to one against the project. So the project—
Two to one.
Two to one, no, two no, one yes against the project from the public. Lots of public left before the meeting ended. So with that, there's nothing else to report from the Planning Commission.
Okay. And I think, I think a number of us actually probably streamed it and watched it live, so I think we know quite a bit, but—
Well, we tried to.
Yeah, but for us, it lasted eight hours.
Well—
That's right. It had to keep rebooting.
Yeah, you had to, you did have to—
It was bad.
—refresh it quite a bit often. But councilmember Diaz, you had a question?
I didn't watch it because I want to make sure that I have a clean slate if and when it comes to the council, but that's not my comments. I have a couple of comments and one question. In the absence of, and this is, I got feedback from the general public who contacted me. Number one, who was the consultant, and were they there in substitution for the lack of legal counsel?
I don't recall the name, but the consultant wasn't a legal consultant, it was a planning consultant. So she participated in the preparation of the package, and she was there to answer maybe deeper questions if we had them regarding that package. David would know the name, I don't remember her name.
Yeah, okay. I only have two comments. Number one, I would encourage the city to make sure either we have the city attorney there, or substitute or representative there at the next meeting. And number two, that we do not delay the public hearing until two hours after presentation. And I know that's not in your control, but I just want to make sure that goes on the record from my perspective. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
There was, one thing that I, I had talked to some folks about, the public comment, and as you mentioned, the meeting was quite lengthy. I had a suggestion, and you could take this with whatever it's worth, you get what you pay for. If you would consider opening public comment on the matter at the beginning of the next meeting, because it's a continuation, and then you could reopen public comment at the end if you want, after all the discussion, just so as a way to make it less burdensome for people who want to make comment. I think that's within your—
Mr. Wan, just to let you know, I am not the chair, but I will, I will let the chair know about your suggestion.
That's it.
Great, thank you. And typically, when you hear it for the second time, you wouldn't have a presentation, or you'd have a very short presentation in all likelihood, so you probably would get to the public comment sooner rather than later. Okay.
David might want to comment.
Okay, do you want to comment?
I do, through the mayor. There were a number of requests for information, and so I understand the concerns—
Is your mic on, David?
It is.
Then you need to pull it closer.
I will.
Because we can barely hear you, I'm sure the people at home cannot.
At the meeting, there were many requests for information, and we're working on preparing those responses. Our objective, given the comments we've heard tonight and we've heard before, would be to provide that information to the commissioners and public in advance of the meeting, the responses, that is, and to do a very brief review of those responses, and then turn it back to the commission and chair, to then go back out to the public. And we did continue this to a date certain, but another opportunity for us would be to renotice the item as well, just to make sure that the public is aware that it is continued to December 10th. And again, we would make sure that our summary is, is just a summary, and then hopefully the commission would go out to the public at that point. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And just as a reminder, when we do have, whether it's council meetings or planning commission meetings, we do post all the materials on our city website, so it would be advantageous for every member of the public to also read the packet that the commissioners read, and then you have all the information, and that also helps with the public comment, so that people are making very educated comments. So, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So then we'll move on to other comments. We do not have a Trails and Landscaping Committee report, but do we have any report from city manager?
Just very briefly, two points. One is that the message was loud and clear that the streaming did not work well for the Planning Commission, and we are working on that, we hope to add it correctly before we get to the next—
Your mic isn't on either. We got to turn those on before the meeting.
Got it. So, just to restate that, technical difficulties that happened at the last meeting, we're trying to straighten that out, so it doesn't happen at the next Planning Commission meeting. There was a lot of folks there, and there was a large demand on, on the cell service in the area, but we're trying to come up with a plan that will prevent that from being a problem the next time. Also, as was mentioned by Commissioner Altual, we do have one vacancy on our Planning Commission, I want to reiterate that point, so the folks that may be listening at home, if anyone's interested in being a part of that Planning Commission, we are taking applications, and we will be coming before you, probably in early January, for consideration of applicants. And that's all I have tonight.
And what's the application deadline?
December 22nd.
December 22nd.
December 22nd, okay. Great, thank you.
You know, just a sidebar, I know we had a lot of problems with the technology and the buffering, but just a reminder to everybody that the video is available a day, maybe two later, so you're able to watch the entire meeting on video uninterrupted.
Yeah, absolutely. So let's call the council reports. Councilmember Diaz?
Thank you. Only two things on the agenda between this meeting and last, was I was very pleased to represent the city at the annual Veterans Day ceremony, which was held in Concord. As you know, Memorial Day, we do it here with Clayton and Concord, and then the Veterans Day is done in Concord at the Willow Pass Park. Well-attended as usual. In fact, we even had councilman, or excuse me, Congressman Desolnay was there as well, as long as representatives from our county supervisor and the Assembly. But it was a good turnout, and very much appreciated that we had a great turnout in respect for the veterans, not only there in Concord, but also here in Clayton. Attended on the 14th, the first committee meeting for the 2020 Art and Wine Festival, just mark your calendars, April 25 and 26, next Art and Wine. That's it.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Wolf?
Okay, I got a quick one. Got a chance to speak at the Concord Clayton 4-H Club, and got a chance to spend some time with some very interesting young people who are our next leaders, and so it was a pleasure to be able to do that. Of course, I spent a little bit of time emailing and speaking with some of our citizens, and a couple of very colorful things. And then, let's see, and then I spoke with our interim city manager on our weekly update, and that is my report.
Great, thank you. Vice Mayor Pierce?
Thank you. I was sorry to miss the Veterans Day celebration from all accounts. It was very well-attended, and a really lovely ceremony, so unfortunately, I had a conference call at exactly that hour, so I was not able to be there, so thank you, Jim. I did have a Contra Costa Transportation Authority Administration and Projects Committee meeting that I chair, and also attended an Association of Bay Area Governments joint meeting with the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, our legislation committees meet jointly, and we also have our administrative committee that meets jointly with MTC's Planning Committee, looking at how we're going forward for Plan Bay Area 2050. That afternoon, I actually got to also help count the votes for the election, which most of you took part in, for the Association of Bay Area Governments' next president and vice president. The president position was uncontested, so Jesse Aricen of Berkeley, the mayor of Berkeley, will be the next president, starting in January, and the next vice president for the next two years will be Belia Ramos, who is a supervisor in Napa County. So we were able to certify that election, well, actually, we'll certify it on Thursday at our executive board meeting. Also had a Legislative Ad Hoc Committee meeting right after that ABAG canvassing meeting, so I was caught in traffic and was a bit late, but thank you, councilmember Wan, for waiting, that was wonderful. Had a Housing Methodology Committee, which is an appointment from the Association of Bay Area Governments Chair, to represent Contra Costa County cities in how we do the assignment for the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, the housing numbers for the next eight years. I've served on this twice before, and was successful in keeping Clayton's numbers relatively low and reasonable. Got a reduction of almost 1,000 last time, so that was good. It's still a high number, but, and whatever we don't do in this cycle, we'll roll over to the next cycle according to state, new state law. Instead of do-over and start from scratch, we start from whatever is left from the last RENA assignment. And so we are working on how the methodology will work, and what factors will go into how those numbers are assigned. It should be an interesting process. We will be meeting monthly through May to figure that out. Also had a meeting of the Bay Area Regional Collaborative, which is representatives from all of the four regional agencies, the Air District, the Bay Conservation Development Commission, the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, and ABAG, all meeting together to cover issues that are common to all of us, and share information. Some of you may remember, probably 10 years ago now, we had an instance where BCDC took an action, and most of us didn't know about it, and then the Air Board took an action saying there could be no new housing within 500 feet of freeways and major transit stops, when ABAG and MTC were putting together a regional plan that said, we should cluster homes around transit stops. And so they were in direct conflict, and part of the reason that this committee was put together was to make sure we don't have those cross-directional actions taking place. We've since worked those out, and we're, we're doing well together, but anyway. And that afternoon, we had a meeting of the California Association of Councils of Government, which is all of our self-help counties, most of our self-help counties, and regional transportation planning agencies, and councils of government in California. And we meet together periodically, I'm a past president of that. And then I just got back this afternoon from the Focus on the Future Transportation Conference, which is a conference of the 27 self-help transportation counties in California, where we share best pack practices and information on how we can go forward into the future to relieve congestion.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Wan?
As Vice Mayor Pierce mentioned, we had our Legislative Ad Hoc Committee meeting, and really the purpose is to give staff guidance on drafting a legislative policy, so that the city is more nimble in advocating for positions that are taken at larger levels at the county, state, and fed level. So I think that was a really good meeting we had, just to kind of talk through some overall guidelines, and I look forward to hearing back. You know, and there's going to be another meeting coming up about, with the Budget and Finance Committee with Councilmember Diaz to be scheduled. One of the, you know, I think at our last meeting, we had a public comment about some of the condemned houses in the area, and I think that meeting would be a really good venue to talk about prioritization for how we want to allocate resources and what's important to the city. So I think that the nature of, like, when we get these comments, it's great, because we could, like, fold them into our regular process. So I think that'll be, I look forward to that, I think that'll be very good. And then, you know, I just, we already talked about the video quality, but I, I heard from many folks about, and so normally, I don't watch the streaming—
Because you're here.
Because I'm here.
Yeah.
But when, I tried to watch the streaming, and I shared this story with our, with Mr. Sobranti, and, you know, I had my computer, I had my phone, and I had a second computer, all loading on the thing, because they would all crash at different times, so I would try to refresh them all simultaneously. I think I did it like 100 times, at least, and, and at the end, I, I think I maybe got 50% of the meeting. And so when we talk about our priorities, I think that this is one that is very important. But, I mean, it's not something that I really can take advantage of, because I'm here, but I do think it's a great avenue for folks, when they're not here, to be, to at least participate vicariously through the video. And I do think it's going to be very important for us to do that, so I just, I look forward to looking for solutions, because I think right now, the video quality, I know that it's very complicated, and there's a number of steps that need to be done, but the overall output is just unacceptable, so, that's it.
Great, thank you. Couple items for me, so I do want to thank also councilmember Diaz for attending the Veterans Day ceremony. Unfortunately, that was a regular workday for me, so I wasn't able to be there, but thank you for speaking. Then I did attend the mayor's conference in El Cerrito on November 7th, I spent my birthday dinner there. So we had an interesting presentation by the general manager of BART, Bob Powers, and I want to, a couple interesting bits that came across in his presentation, I want to just share with all of you, and also our public. I don't know what percentage of Clayton residents commute by BART, but, you know, there are definitely some issues with BART and commuting, the experience by those, but some positive news that came out of that presentation. So by February 2020, BART is only going to be running 10 car trains through the tube during peak hours, so that's great, because they are currently still running eight or nine car trains, which, so there's one way of increasing capacity. Then another big project they have is modernizing the control system, and the control system really regulates how many cars you can get through the transbay tube at any given hour. So right now, their frequency is 22 trains in an hour, so that obviously limits the frequency we can have in the Antioch, Pittsburgh-Anyo line as well, but what they're looking at doing is, they're looking at awarding a contract on the modernization of the control system in some point 2020, and they're hoping to increase the frequency with the, with an upgraded system to 30 cars per hour. So that should also be an improvement, hopefully. And then I wanted to share one other thing, I'll pass this around, but something that I received from the mayor's conference, from the chair, which is just a letter that a number of mayors in California, mostly in Bay Area, or immediately surrounding Bay Area, had signed and submitted to the California Public Utilities Commission, having to do with the PG&E bankruptcy. And I know there's an initiative, or some are proposing, a customer-owned utility process, so I just wanted to share that letter that I received through the mayor's conference, so just information.
This is the effort where they're attempting to take over parts of PG&E?
I think that's part of it. I think that's, I think it's about bringing, bringing some of these issues to the attention of the bankruptcy court, but also the Public Utilities Commission, in hopes of improving it, and certainly improving our fire resiliency. So, anyway, that's just information. So with that, we are done with reports, and we'll go to general public comment on non-agenda items. So this is the portion of the meeting when any member of the public can speak on any item that's not on our agenda. I don't have any speaker cards, but if anyone would like to address the council, please come on up.
Or explain.
Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment. Then we'll go on to public hearings, we have none, and, which takes us to action items. Our first action item is action item 8A, and I believe there's a little bit of a disconnect or arrow in the way in which the agenda reads, and what's actually in our staff reports. If you look at the actual staff report, it actually is an opportunity for us to discuss for the first time, as an agenda item, the undertaking of an effort to update the town center-specific plan, so I don't think we have in front of us consideration of establishment of ad hoc committee, or actual approval of a request for proposals, but with that, if we could please have Mr. Sobranti give us a little bit of a preview as to what is in front of us today.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to, just to reiterate, as you mentioned, tonight, you will have the opportunity, as a council, for a discussion related to the amendment or possible update of the town center-specific plan. Again, my apologies for the inaccuracy of the agenda, we are taking steps to make sure that doesn't happen again, but the staff report is correct, the agenda just didn't keep up with the modifications. So with that said, let me give you just a real quick background on the town center-specific plan. It was completed back in 1990. It includes approximately 52 or so acres of land, including the areas around the library that we're sitting in, as well as City Hall, and then the downtown itself. It includes a land use plan, design guidelines, circulation section, and mechanism for implementation. The preparation of the original plan took approximately a year or so, and involved a significant amount of public comment, public input. The plan has been amended several times, including back in 1999, 2007, and 2008. Council does have the ability to, again, amend the plan, or complete a new plan, or update it. Staff estimates that the cost for just a simple amendment would be perhaps at least $150,000, and would, again, be a lengthy process, probably even more than a year, maybe between a year and two years, and it would, again, include a significant amount of public input. So should staff, excuse me, should council wish to move forward with a new amended specific plan, funding for this effort might best be allocated during the upcoming budget season. So with that in mind, you may want to consider that at the same time that you're considering your goals, and have that funding be a competition between your top priority goals this coming year. So that's, that's my quick preview of what you have to talk about. We do have staff here that would be happy to answer any questions, and what this might look like going forward, and I'll turn it back to the council for discussion.
Perfect, so let's take any questions of staff first. Councilmember Wan?
You mentioned the amendment would run in the neighborhood of 150. What's the alternative is, to an amendment is a re, what's the alternative?
And I'm going to turn it over to our community development directors, very familiar with this process.
I think the process would range from a focused amendment to a comprehensive update. And if you're talking about a comprehensive update, then as the interim city manager indicated, the expense, the estimated cost, would be well in excess of $150,000. However, if the council would decide to look at a more focused amendment, the cost could be less than that, but we would need to get a sense of what that focused amendment would look like. As you all know, a specific plan has a number of different elements, land use, circulation, public utilities, et cetera, and the specific plan needs to be internally consistent, and it also needs to be consistent with the general plan. So as you might entertain a more in-depth or expansive amendment to the specific plan, that would likely open up, kind of looking into those various elements within the specific plan, and even looking at the general plan, to potentially amend the general plan, so that the specific plan and the general plan are consistent. So typically, with something like this, there would be a visioning process, to get kind of a sense of what the council, what the community has in mind, in terms of the level of amendment, and then from that, we could better advise you in terms of process and cost. There would be an environmental document as well, and again, depending on the scope of the project, it could be anywhere from a negative declaration to an EIR. So that's a bit of background, I'd be happy to respond to any additional questions.
So are these, is, is the difference between amendment and comprehensive update, are those more terms of art, rather than something specifically defined? Because I imagine that we can, you know, have an amendment, an update, a complete redo, or, I mean, there's probably like a spectrum of activities. Are these defined anywhere, or is it more like just an understanding of what we're talking about, the scope?
It's an understanding, and again, an amendment can be focused, so for example, there's the urban design section, there's the land use section.
But I mean, amendment is fairly broad, it can be amendment for the entire document, and still be an amendment, right?
That's true.
Or, or a word, right? Okay, so that's, I just wanted to clarify, like, when we're talking amendment, we're really talking the entire range of potential activity?
That is correct. As I said, a focused, it could be a focused amendment, or something much more expansive. So you're correct, an amendment could be very broad, could be multiple elements of the specific plan.
So when we ballpark 150,000, are we ballparking? What is your, your scope when you're talking about the ballpark?
In terms of that ballpark, we are anticipating, again, because there's a need for internal consistency, and consistency with the general plan, we're anticipating, as you look at the specific plan and decide to perhaps amend one or two areas, that's going to trigger looking at other elements and sections of the specific plan, as well as the general plan. So a broader scope of work. It would be unusual to have a precise, focused, single amendment. Okay, I hope that helps.
So in 2008, when this was amended, what did we spend, do you know?
I don't know what we spent at that time, a lot of that work was done in-house, and it took a lot of time— A lot of that work was done in-house, and it took a lot of time to do that, and it was done over time, and it was basically element by element, or section by section. So for example, urban design was, was certainly one area that was looked at, at that time. But as I said earlier, the idea really would be to get kind of a sense of what is the council's direction, and community's direction, council direction, obviously, in terms of the scope. What is the scope of amendment that you have in mind? That's critical, to, to determine cost, and capacity, and work effort.
Yeah, I wish, I wish that the, in the back, Appendix F of the plan, it tells you like when the amendments were passed, and, and the resolutions, but it doesn't tell you what was actually amended. You'd have to go refer back to the actual resolution to, to find it, right?
Included in the documents, you can see on several of the pages where the amendments from 2007 and 2008 fall.
But you can't search for it.
Okay.
Right, so I mean, you'd have to kind of go through the whole thing.
It requires some hunting, yes.
Yeah, it'd be nice if we have a list, but okay, that's fine, thanks.
Any other questions of staff? Seeing none, let me open up a public comment. I don't have any speaker cards, but if anyone would like to address the council, come on up. Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to discussion. So I think what's in front of us is really, sort of a couple key decisions, in terms of whether or not we want to enter into this undertaking. If, if so, what is it involved? What kind of process do we envision? And then also, where do we obtain the funding? And maybe the funding part will be part of a larger discussion when we look at the budget. But I, I think what we're looking today, at least, is, is there interest among the council to do this, and what do each of us envision as the process going forward? So who would like to start with comments?
Well, I'll kind of kick it off. We've done some targeted amendments over time, and as part of that original committee, when I was on the Planning Commission back in 1990, it was a very extensive public outreach. It did take well over a year to get the process accomplished. We probably had a specific plan committee of somewhere around 30 people, including members of the public. It was regular meetings, well-attended meetings, where we did a lot of work. I think it would probably be as well-attended, if not better, were we to amend it. However, the fact that we have something to start with would make it easier. We were starting totally from scratch, at that point. And at that point, we were just starting construction of Oakhurst. There were several subdivisions in the town that had not been built. We didn't have the commercial area, we didn't have Diamond Terrace. We were looking at what would a commercial area look like, we were looking at what are architectural standards, all that kind of thing. So it was a very extensive process. How much of that would need to be rewritten, would depend on the will of the community. I would suggest that we might want to wait and talk this over next spring, when we're putting our budget together, and our work plan together, our goals together, with our new city manager, to, to kind of get a feel for where we might want to go, and how extensive a rewrite we want to do. I think it takes everybody doing some studying of what we have now, and kind of thinking about, how much of that do they realistically think we want to change? How much of it just needs to be updated to current conditions? And there is some of that, certainly. And then, taking a pretty hard look at how much in the general plan would have to change, to be consistent with whatever changes we want to make to the specific plan. And once you start getting into the general plan, we've kept it up with updates to specific elements. Transportation element, obviously, the housing element has been updated, a lot of those things have been updated. But a lot of the maps are pretty dramatically out of date, because as I say, when we wrote the last general plan, it was an update in 1990, and that was when we did the, the specific plan as well, and obviously, Oakhurst and many other subdivisions have taken place since then. So, I think we want to be very thoughtful about how we do this. I think it probably is something we need to do, but we need to be very specific about what we want to do, and that's probably a good study session, perhaps even with the Planning Commission at some point, in the early spring sometime. I'm guessing February, March area. Let our new city manager at least get his feet wet before we dive into something like this, so that he figures out what's going on, but I think he could be very helpful with this process. And then figure out how much we want to do, and what we think that scope needs to be, and go out and do an RFP, and, and see what we've got. I think if we put our minds to it, we can probably find a way to pay for it. I'm not sure, and here's a question for staff. Would, I believe it was SB 2 funds qualify for this, or not? We get planning funds out of one of those bills.
SB 2 funds would require that there be a, a housing component
Right.
to your planning effort.
Which would be, perhaps cover the update to the general plan, if we had to do that.
Perhaps, perhaps.
Yeah.
We would need to study what funding options there would be for the project, and I think you're absolutely accurate, in terms of needing to really sit down and scope what the community, what the council wants to do with this project.
So, just some suggestions, that we all need to really do a deep dive into at least reading and understanding what we've got now, what specific places we can highlight that we think need updating, or changing altogether. And then think about how broad a process we might want to have, because it could be like we had then, a year-long process where we met every two weeks, and we had more than 30 people on the committee. That's a lot of consultant time and money. So I don't know whether that's something we want to do again, or whether it is something bigger, or much more targeted.
Okay. Councilmember Diaz?
Well, you partially answered the questions I had, and with the size of the effort, 30 people, I mean, that's five, councilmembers, five planning commissioners, plus what, 20 other people that would, that were involved in this. I, I agree with you that we probably want to do this, or at least start the process, when we get into our goal-setting for the next year, and get a better feel for what, what's laying before us, because it just strikes me, it's probably a, a good idea to take on some effort, maybe not to the extent that was done back then, but definitely something between zero and, and that, that was done before, because there is a significant amount of interest on the remaining pieces of property that are potentially for development here. I think that, I would concur, one, that we wait till the new city manager gets in place, gives him some time to get involved and understand what, what's going on, and then maybe come up with some sort of a sketchy outline as to what, how best to proceed with that.
Okay, Councilmember Juan.
Yeah, I mean, just to, I mean, I, I think I, I agree with a lot of your comments. Well, just to clarify though, this is already in our goals. Like, we've already decided that this is what we want to do. It's just a question of how, when, and how we get there, so.
And staff, time to get it done.
Yeah, so I think, I think we're all in agreement that this is something that is important to the community, and it's something we want to do. So that part, I think, is great. I, I, I recognize that in the past, it was a very big effort to get it from nothing to something, from nothing to something. I think, you know, update versus creation will probably be, possibly be less, maybe? So hopefully that happens. You know, I think land use as an element of this, of the specific plan is probably one of the key focuses of folks. Like, I know that the plan contains like what kind of trees and whatnot, and that's also very important. But I think that some of the more contentious issues that people have a high interest in, are, are the areas that we would focus on. So I would, I would, you know, I, I think we should continue to have it in our goals, and it'll be in there during the next goal session, we'll probably roll it forward. And then, when we talk about budget, I, I think, knowing that we want, that this is part of our goals, it already is, and it will continue to be, when we do the next mid-year budget, whenever that is, and we're just talking about the, trying to get my fiscal years correct here, the 2021 budget, that we allocate a sufficient amount that is representative of the level of effort that we are, you know, targeting. And so I think both of those things can happen, those, both of those things will happen in parallel with the city manager coming on, the mid-year budget session will happen, where we'll talk about other priorities, and then, when we start talking about adopting the next year's budget, it'll be included in there as well. And so I think this is just probably one of the very first steps. I don't even know, I mean, on the agenda, it talked about RFP, but the plan doesn't, so I'm not sure if there's like an action item more than that. But that's, that's really it.
Yeah.
So, I'm sorry, given, given the fact we're at the 11th hour of what we've already set up on our goals for this year, I guess that's understandable, given the upheaval that we've had within our staff and our city manager. I think it's imperative, of course, that the city manager, new city manager is involved in this process, and a wide-open transparency with the public, so that they can have their say on this. And again, I, I agree with, with Jim, that maybe it isn't such a gigantic undertaking as it was back in, in 90, but this is, what, 11, almost 12 years since the last amendment, and a lot of this is outdated. So I, I think it's important that we table this into, into our, our next, our goal-setting sessions, continue this as a goal, and, and find the money to do whatever it is that we need to, to amend here.
At least we can make it in color.
Yeah, and, and put it online, where we can search.
And text, and text searchable.
Yeah, making it searchable would be good.
To make it searchable.
So I do want to say a few things about how we kind of get this done, because there are a number of ways in which we could do this, and obviously, one way, which would be a cheap way, if you will, would be for us, or the Planning Commission, to just direct staff to make certain amendments, and that's easy. We could each redline the Town Center specific plan, and, and, but, the problem with that process is really that it, it's not based on a lot of data, or feedback, or, or various set of feedbacks. So I, I do think that, you know, so we run our council meetings and our Planning Commission meetings according to the normal processes, where, you know, we get presentations, and we ask questions, we provide the public an opportunity to do three minutes each, but it's really not conducive to sort of very collaborative process, and it's really not conducive to brainstorming either. So I do think that we, if we want to do some kind of update to the Town Center specific plan, I do think that we need to remove the council and remove the Planning Commission a little bit from that process. I don't think we should be in the driving seat. I think obviously, ultimately, we will be the decision-makers in that, whatever comes out of it. But at least initially, I would like to start with the community. There are a couple of different ways in which you could do that, and there are some really good consultants out there who can run really good sort of workshop processes, and something called charrettes, where, where you really take, you go to different stakeholders, and you invite the community, and, and, and there's a lot that goes into it, which raises the cost, because it's, it's impossible to do one evening of community workshop and expect to have all the feedback, you know? I think, as we saw in the last Planning Commission meeting, and as Chair Clovan very wisely said, you know, there's a, a lot of times, we have a lot of emotional responses to these things, and, but underneath all of that, once we kind of dive deeper in and start reading materials, there's a lot of factual information under there, too. So we need to get beyond the emotional responses, and really get, get, start thinking about the facts. You know, start thinking about what are all the ideas, which ones are feasible, which ones we could be implement, which ones could be funded. So for example, let's say that there's a desire to do any kind of wreck-and-part facility in downtown, which is an option. Well, that, you know, we can zone for that, but then we need to fund it. And funding something like that means you have to go to the voters, in all likelihood, for, for some kind of tax, tax measure. So, we, we need to kind of get through all of those scenarios, in terms of, you know, what's available, you know, what kind of options are there, what do we want, how do we fund it, what's really feasible and what's not? And we need to all understand the different development constraints. So I, I do think that some kind of workshop process that starts with the community is the best way, and I realize that's not cheap, and that's going to be one of the things, I think, for us to find and see where we could find the funding. If we could get some kind of plan, you know, grant monies, or monies from the state, that would be awesome, but, and maybe that's something for us to look into, but I, I think that, that's it. And then, I, I think the one thing, too, about the Town Center specific plan, I think we, as a city, have always hoped for a, a greater retail base at downtown, because retail produces income for the city. But I think we also realize that in the last few years, retail industry has changed tremendously, and it's not changing back. So I, there are some fundamental questions to think through as well, as to what's really feasible, you know, is retail in our downtown feasible anymore? I don't know the answer to that, but I think those are the types of questions we need to go through. So, I, so I, I definitely agree, I don't, I don't think this is something we're going to do in two meetings, obviously, so I, I would certainly, I, I do want to keep it on our list of things to discuss, and I do want to keep it on, on the, on the list of goals. I do want to look at it in the next, when the next budget comes up, in terms of how much it's going to cost, and, and where we get the funding, if we want to do it. But I definitely would be supportive of looking at it again, but I definitely want to do it from the community's perspective, and, which is a little bit more comprehensive process.
I, I agree. I think community workshops is probably the best way to start, because you get a lot. I would, as far as funding, and you mentioned other grant sources, I think that would be great. The only thing I'd be cognizant of, and this is something we had talked about earlier, is that a lot of times, these, as you mentioned, these fund, these alternate funding sources come with hooks, and I don't like a lot of the hooks. So, I just want to be careful that we don't accept money when we're not willing to pay the price. So those, that, that part is, is just something to be aware of.
Absolutely.
And I, and I think we should make, we should have, when we discuss this the next time, we should really kind of come prepared with, hopefully staff can, can look into it a little bit more, and help us out, in terms of what do we realistically think it's going to cost, based on what we want, and, and, you know, do, do we take it out of our budget? Do we take it out of reserves? Do we find other, other sources, whatever the, whatever the solution is? Or do we not do it? Because, do we defer it for another year? I don't know the solution, but I think it'd be good to have and continue this discussion. Any other thoughts? Does that provide enough direction to staff? Or any questions?
I believe we got it. I can guarantee you that we'll be passing all of this on to the incoming, both city manager and Community Development Director staff, that will be filling, filling the shoes in the not-too-distant future. I think we can be more targeted in exactly how we approach this, to keep the costs down, and I think we understand where you ultimately want to get, so we may be able to streamline this. We'll do our best to tee it up for the, for the folks coming, coming to the city.
That'd be great.
I would just cite an example, aside from some of the maps and the downtown stuff, one of the elements we had in our Town Center specific plan was to find a location for City Hall in the downtown. That's all taken care of now. That can be just eliminated as a goal. So, you know, it, at the time, we were in those buildings that we've since torn down, and we had been there for far longer than they were supposed to have been useful. And so, you know, the thinking, when we wrote this plan, was that in the downtown would be a perfect location for City Hall, perhaps at the entrance to downtown. And then we had the opportunity to get the winery, and that seemed like a really smart way to go. So, things have changed a lot since it was initially written, and so I, I would just advise that we all pull it down off the internet, and, and read what's there, and get familiar with it, and, and go from there. We did have the full Planning Commission and council on the original We did have the full planning commission and council on the original committee because they were part of the information process, and I think that's helpful. So I'm, I'm not sure that we want to say they're not part of the committee, but I think it needs to be a much broader committee than that. The, the other thing that I was thinking of just went out of my head. Anyway, I, I think getting familiar with it is a, a really good idea, and then targeting, highlighting, even though it's not searchable yet. It actually could be, it could be made searchable pretty darn easy.
Does there exist an electronic document of this?
Yeah, it's on the website.
Well, no, no, not the image, I mean, an actual electronic document?
Hmm, we can scan it with OCR and make it searchable. I mean, I could do that tomorrow.
Yeah, I could do that.
No, and others.
I've got the software on my home computer. I could scan it in and make it an OCR copy.
You know, and other sections that.
They can too.
Sorry. And other sections that have probably still been helpful is, you know, there's a lot of stuff here about preservation and some of the architectural style, and I don't think that we're looking to undo our style necessarily, but, so anyway, but there, there's, it would be helpful for all of us to read it from beginning to the end and then go from there.
And, and that, and the general plan.
Yep.
I have read it, but it was like a year ago.
Yeah. A good refresher never hurts.
Okay, very good. So I think we provided direction, and then we'll look at it again probably in the first quarter on 2020.
Good suggestions.
Perfect. Then we'll move on to council items. Are there any requests for future meetings? Seeing none, then we have no co-session, which means we are adjourned until December 3.